Councilmember Streep is joining now.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Dorothy. All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order Town of Windermere Virtual Workshop, dated for October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. The current time is six P M. We have a forum this evening. At this point, I would like to see if we have anyone who would like to make an open forum public comment for up to three minutes. If you'll raise your hand in the virtual hand, you'll have the opportunity to speak. All right. See no virtual hands raised. We will move forward with our agenda this evening. This evening's agenda includes a new business presentation on Chondelock, annexation and process and update on that particular situation, along with our other virtual workshops as we've have held with those interested members of the community and of Chondelock. So with that, I will turn it over to Robert. We have Chief and Brad and Robert available to report tonight out on this presentation. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you for all of you attending tonight. We have had about four to five public meetings, two in person, and then three virtual sessions to make sure that the board is out there based on resident input of people that live in Chondelock and they're interested in annexing into the town of Windermere. And I would have to go back to probably about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when the town was looking at the possibility of annexing in the northwest corner of Popco Island and Conroy Windermere. The town council went through a charrette or planning session in order to come up with certain areas they identified that would make sense for the town's growth in a compact and concise manner. One of those areas that was identified would be Chondelock. So when some of the residents of Chondelock met with us about the possibility of annexing in early this year, we're more than happy to provide them the information and make sure that we get public input relative to the possibility of the annexation. And then we also met with the HOA within Chondelock. And if you see the map that's on the very cover, there is an area that was developed after some of the properties were developed along the lakefront. And then the actual Chondelock HOA is everything that is to the north and to the west. So anything that doesn't have a hash mark is the HOA and the balance is again, Chondelock, but they're not part of the HOA. And I do have an updated map if we need to see that. But the program for tonight will be, I'll turn it over to Brad that'll go over the annexation process and so forth. And then I'll get into the pros and cons of annexing into the town of Windermere relative to administration, public services. And then we'll have Chief Ogden get in there and talk about public safety. And then we'll go into questions and answers. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Brad Cornelius.
I'm in the dark, so I'm going to turn off my camera. Well, there you go. I'll come back. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Brad Cornelius with Way Trims, serving as contractor town planner. I'm sitting on my back porch this evening. As Robert said, I want to go over the process of annexation a little bit and some background about annexation. So next, please, Robert. So just as Robert said, this area that we're looking at is the Chondelock area. It's approximately one hundred and three acres. It lies directly adjacent to the western boundary of the town. It's comprised of seventy-four parcels, fifty-one single-family dwelling units. I do have a short, quick update. There's actually fifty-two now. I did notice today that there was a house that was C O that doesn't show up in the property praiser. So actually, there's fifty-two single-family homes there. And currently, under the county, it has a rural settlement, future land use, and a rural country estate zoning, which is a one unit per acre type of density for single-family homes is what's in that area. Next, please. So in terms of an annexation, and the town's been through this before, there's two ways, you know, that it can happen in Florida, two primary ways. One is through what's called a voluntary annexation, and that's where the property owner would come to the town and request to be annexed within the town. And that kind of annexation is really a fairly simple one where it requires notification to the county, and then it's an ordinance adoption by the town council to to annex into the town of Windermere. With voluntary annexation, though, you have to have everybody agree to the annexation. And you can't have, if you have more than one, you can't have a situation where you have pockets or areas where people don't agree to it. So that's the limitation of the voluntary annexation. The other way of annexation is involuntary annexation. And that's where basically, the town leads the annexation process and does an analysis of an area to make sure that it can provide the public services and that it does make financial sense for the town to annex it in. We have to coordinate with the county. The town council then goes through a review of that. And the big difference here between a voluntary and this involuntary is then the town council has to hold a referendum. And the referendum, under the statute, you're required to do it for the area that's being proposed for the annexation. So the registered electors or voters within the Chondelock annexation area, they would then have to vote. And as of July of this year, there were a hundred and eight registered voters within that area. And you would have to get a simple majority for that to pass under that referendum. I do need to let the council know there is an option, but it's not required under the statute. But you do have the option to also bring it to a vote of the current registered voters within the town, the current residents of the town of Windermere. It's a, it's a, it's, you don't have to do it. It's optional, but you can do it. If you do do that, then it has to get approved both by the area being annexed in as well as the voters of the town itself. So that, that, that process, if that gets approved, then it would come back to the council for the final ordinance adoption to then annex it into the town. So that's, those are the processes. In this case, for Chondelock, it will, it will need to be an involuntary annexation. It's unlikely that we would get every one hundred percent of those property owners to agree. So we can't create an enclave or an area. So that's why we would have to do this as a, as an involuntary annexation. Next, please. So in terms of the process, what we, when this happened a couple of years ago where this started, and this is how it went forward before, is to get comfort for the town council that there is support in that area because there is an expense to go through this process with the referendum and the analysis and everything that has to be done, that it, you, that you ask for at least fifty-one percent of the property owners in the area to submit a petition or an agreement to the town saying, yes, we support the annexation. We want to be annexed in. You know, that way, the town council could have some level of comfort, knowing that if we go to the expense, if a good chance that it would pass the referendum. There's no guarantee of it. But it does give you, you know, a better sense of of safety, I guess I would say there for that. We would recommend you do that same kind of process here as well. And again, as I already said, this would be if, if the council is comfortable, we would move forward with the process with the referendum and go into the voters to, in Chondelock for them to approve or not to approve to be annexed in this, into the town. Next, please. What, part of the analysis that we have to do is we have to make sure that the annexation is compliant with state law with chapter one seventy-one. And it is. I mean, it is. It's pretty straightforward here. Basically, it has, it has to be contiguous to the existing town limits, which it is. It has to be contiguous, same thing. It has to be compact and not linear, which this is, this is, you know, an area that, that's together. It's not kind of stretched long along a roadway or something like that. So it does meet that requirement. And it doesn't create, if we bring in this whole area, it doesn't create any enclave, enclaves or pockets of unincorporated area that would be surrounded by the town. So we do find it, you know, compliant with these requirements of Florida statute. Next, please. I won't go through this whole thing, but the other part of Florida statute, all those words say there is that we have to look at this area to determine whether this area is being used for what the statute calls urban purposes, which clearly it is. It's a developed area. It's not greenfield where we're going out and annexing a bunch of farmland for future development. It clearly meets these definitions of an area developed for urban purposes. So it does meet that requirement under Florida statute as well. Next, please. So this next part is what would happen after an annexation if it were to be approved. So once the annexation occurs, the county regulations, the comprehensive plan, the zoning regulations, they all stay in place until the town updates its, your comprehensive plan to include them into the town of Windermere into your comprehensive plan. As you'll see, we will try to do this. If this goes forward, we would kind of do this right in order with each other. So there's not a big gap there when that would occur. Also, though, the important part of this, and this was a big part of the discussion we had with, with the residents of Chondelock, is for the portions of that area that's under a subdivision, a development agreement with the county, it's, you know, a site plan, development plan. The town's land development code, you already recognize that as those conditions, those requirements stay in place. They don't change, even if they may be different than what town's requirements are. Because there's already an existing development agreement there. There's already a master plan and we would, those would still stay in place and we would follow those as the town. For the other areas that aren't part of that, that would be something as it would, if this would go forward, this would have to come into the town as a planned unit development, which is what your code requires and your comprehensive plan requires. And what would occur as part of that process, that we would identify those areas where the existing regulations that cover the other parts of Chondelock may differ from what the towns are and then present those to the town council as part of that P U D. And ultimately, it would be up to the town council whether you'd want to accept those different conditions or not as part of that P U D. So there is the vehicle and the ability to do that, to not change any of the rules under which people have been developing under there already. And that's the process it would go through. But ultimately, it would be up to the town council whether to approve that or not. Well, that would be that process. Next, please. This is a rough idea of a timeline, and this, this can vary quite a bit, but just generally, say, after the town council gets a comfort level that you're comfortable with, we just kind of use that fifty-one percent threshold as a starting point, but it could be any time else. You know, we, we think it'll be about thirty days to complete required annexation analysis. It could be pretty quick. I know Robert's already done a lot of the financial, the operational side of it. And as you saw, we've already done kind of the land use side of it. So a lot of that is done. So we, wouldn't take us very long to get the analysis completed. Then we would have to have the public hearings to set the referendum. So we, you know, think about sixty days or so for that to occur. And then another thirty days or so to the referendum. So you're looking at about ninety to one hundred and twenty days from the time the council says, yes, we're comfortable. Let's move forward to getting to that referendum process. So about, about, about three, about three to six months. Somewhere in there with that one. And so then with the annexation, once we get through that process, then we come through with the land use change and the rezoning. Next, Robert? And so then we would come with the land use, the change of your future land use map, your comprehensive plan to bring Chondelock into the town, adopt the P U D process amendment, and that would add another sixty to ninety days on there. So in total, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, maybe nine to twelve months in terms of that total process. Again, it could be shorter, it could be longer, just depending on the specifics once we got into it. But I think that's a general timeline to consider if this moves forward. Next, please. And now Robert will give you the other side of this, the administrative side. Thank you.
It's Brad. And again, at the very end of the presentation, we'll be able to answer some of the questions that have come in recently relative to the possibility of annexing in. But what I wanted to answer was a lot of the questions that have come in. You know, how does this benefit the town? How does it benefit the residents of Chondelock? We want to make sure that this is a win-win for both parties involved. So we'll go over the town's responsibilities versus HOA responsibilities, solid waste, fire EMS, politics, additional benefits, and then also the financial impacts to the residents of Chondelock and then the residents of the town of Windermere. So the responsibilities versus the HOA responsibilities, the intent is that nothing will change. That currently, whatever the HOA is responsible for, they'll maintain that responsibility, meaning that they will maintain the maintenance of the gate, the roadways, the common areas, the streetlights, anything and everything that they are currently responsible for, they'll continue to do that. And that's part of that cost benefit analysis that we've done relative to, okay, well, if we're going to annex in this area, what are the benefits for the town and how much is it going to cost the town? Based on our financials that we've done, again, there's no difference in level of service relative to Public Works, Town Admin, or the Police Department. So the town would see a revenue benefit of about four hundred thousand dollars for the annexation of Chondelock. And that is not increasing taxes, not increasing assessments, so on and so forth. But again, everything that we agree to prior to annexation will be memorialized in an annexation agreement that was not done when the annexations were done, I think in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. But we'll make sure that everything is written out to make sure that everybody understands what and who is responsible for what relative to responsibilities prior to annexation occurring. So solid waste recycling, this is a big thing that I think a lot of the residents of Chondelock would appreciate is the fact that we do offer two times a week solid waste pickup. It's on Tuesdays and Fridays, and then we do recycling that's on Tuesdays and then yard waste, which is on Wednesdays. The prices for recycling did go a little up this year. And that's because of the landfill issues and also the sorting facilities. But again, what you're paying now versus what you'll be paying if it extends to town of Windermere, two times a week versus one times a week, one time a week is a huge upgrade, especially if there's a storm, if there's a holiday. Then you're looking at another week in order for you to get your solid waste picked up. And we also have white goods, which is like fridges, freezers, toilets, stuff like that. We do offer that twice a year for those pickups for the residents as well. So you'd be seeing an increase in your solid waste and recycling pickups from one week to, or one day a week to two days a week. Fire service protection, this was a huge issue when it came into the annexations that were discussed with, I believe, Isleworth, Chondelock, and some other areas. And that was under Mayor Karate, so you can tell how long ago this was. There is an agreement between the town of Windermere and Acoe. And the reason for that is the town of Windermere does not have fire protection services or EMS. So we contracted out. We're only two point two square miles. And we're only three thousand residents. So the amount of money that it costs to operate a full-time fire department is not something that the town of Windermere can afford. You know, the, the public safety aspect of it probably takes about at least almost a third, if not more, of the current budget. So we look at other ways in order to provide the service, and the service would be provided by Acoe Fire Department. So when you have an emergency call, Acoe EMS will be the first to arrive and then Fire Protection Services after that. Now, there's a misconception relative to automatic aid versus mutual aid. Mutual aid is if all heck breaks loose, then mutual aid steps in. So if there's a huge fire or something that is going on in the town or surrounding jurisdiction, the fire services and EMS do not need to get approval prior to going into that area. There's a mutual aid agreement where they can go ahead and just respond ASAP because, again, it is something that is in mutual benefit of all jurisdictions. Now, an automatic aid agreement, which is what Acoe has with Orange County Fire Department, is more of a, you know, I scratch your back, you scratch mine. What I mean by that is that in south Acoe slash Windermere, Orange County has more fire stations. In north Acoe, Acoe has more fire stations. So the automatic aid agreement allows Acoe to respond to calls in Orange County in the northern portion of Acoe. So they don't have to develop more fire stations or EMS stations. And in the south, then Orange County responds to the same types of calls in order to assist Acoe. But I think Chief can attest to this, that a majority of the calls that we do get are responded by Acoe FD or EMS. And when we talk about the actual financial impact, right now, the current mileage rate is point eight mils for fire EMS, but we're looking to reduce that to point seven mils. And people are like, okay, well, what are mils? If you look at your tax bill, the probably the, the lowest rate that you would see if annexed in would be the town of Windermere, which would be three point seven, four or five mils. That's your mileage rate. So you divide your your property appraised value, divide that into a thousand, and then multiply that by three point seven, four, two, five, or point eight to figure out what the assessment's going to be. But again, as we said before, we're looking at reducing that because we're taking in more than what the cost is right now. But we're going to have to help them or assist them in buying a water tanker. So I do believe that that's going to be point seven in next fiscal year. And you may ask, okay, well, with fire services, you know, if annexed in May or June before the next fiscal year starts, you know, how or when will the services be provided? They'll be provided upon annexation. So the town would have to flow some of that cost relative to fire EMS and also for other services until such time as that tax revenue starts coming into the town. So politics. Think of this as layers. Right now, you have federal, state, and county. So you vote for the constitutional officers, your district one commissioner. But that's it. So for the entire county, and you have, I think Brad said, a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight registered voters, that's not a huge say in an entire county. When you look at a hundred and seven voters within the town of Windermere with three thousand residents, that is a big say. So you have more of a direct impact on what happens locally versus what happens countywide. So you just gain that additional layer. And I think you can, I think some of the people on the call can attest as far as the accessibility of myself, the mayor, council members, and the chief when it comes to getting answers quickly and figuring out what's going on in your area locally. But it gives you that extra layer of input. And you also get to sit on various local boards, committees that make recommendations to town council for the betterment of your immediate community. One of the questions that did come up during some of the public input meetings that we've had was, well, can somebody from Chondelock run for office? Of course. Not only one, but more than one. We've had various council members from different HOAs actually be elected to their positions. Now, the thing is, is that they make decisions based on what is the best for the town of Windermere. Not what's best for Chondelock, not what's best for the manors, not what's best for Marina Bay. Our track record shows that, that they make the best decisions based on the information that they receive for the entire town of Windermere. So there's no diluting voter counts or anything like that. It is just making sure that whoever is willing to volunteer their time and make decisions on the better, the betterment of the town of Windermere, they're allowed to do so, and they would get that after one year of eligibility. Added benefits that you would get. Right now, Chondelock is not able to access the town boat ramps. So you'll be able to access those. That'd be on Bessie and Fernwood. You would also get the ability to play on Windermere Recreation Center, the tennis courts, and same thing for the Main Street courts. You'll be able to attend resident-only events. I believe we have two right now. You'll receive discounts on town hall rentals. And as I said before, you'll be able to sit on the boards and committees. And then one of the big things that we heard back from the HOA and also residents of Chondelock was the disaster recovery time. Now, with the town of Windermere and the relationships that we have, and the fact that we're only two point two square miles, we were able to clean up the entire town within a few weeks. Orange County took, I believe, over three months in order to clean up all the areas where Hurricane Ian had impacted. Thankfully, we were spared by Delia, but rest assured, if something were to happen, the town of Windermere is well-prepared in order to take care of that and take care of it immediately. And this comes from not only just stormwater or storm debris, but also power outages, safety concerns, so on and so forth. So the town of Windermere actually was one of the first ones to submit for reimbursements in the first ice storm. And then in the second ice storm, we're able to get everything done within a short amount of time. And we've actually been reimbursed already for that recovery with Orange County. I can't make the same comments relative to their response time. Financial impact. Right now, again, if the mileage rate, which is staying the same as at three point four, two, five mils, with the solid waste, the fire rescue, the stormwater assessments, your financial impact would be about three hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. Now, if were the town council were to lower that for the next fiscal year, which starts in October of two thousand and twenty-four, you'd be looking at about a hundred and fifty dollars a year as far as a cost difference. And the increase in that cost is mostly for the solid waste assessment, meaning that you're getting that two times a week versus one time a week. But again, the benefits that we talked about far outweigh any of the cons, both for the Chondelock residents and also for the residents of the town of Windermere. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Chief Ogden, and he'll go over the public safety aspects relative to the Police Department. Chief?
Thanks, Robert. I appreciate it. As Robert said, we had several meetings already, and I've attended all the meetings and shared our competencies as a police department should people decide that annex or annexation move forward. So I won't try to continue with some of that, but more relevant, relevant to today's discussion for the town council members and some of our residents as well. As far as the assessment to the police department, I think it would be, the impact on us would be de minimis at best. It's a very small geographical location, gated community. I assess that we don't need any additional officers that are going to be needed for this. The crime trends and patterns are no more are consistent with what we currently have in town. So I wouldn't expect to see anything more or less based on that. They already have click to enter as their mandate from Orange County, which is the same thing that we have there. So we have, clearly have access to the Chondelock property. So that would not be any concern for us as well. So, Robert, I didn't feel like I needed to go over all the same stuff we did with Chondelock. I think, I thought this was just more geared towards the council members to, if there was any impact on the police department itself. If you want me to share more, let me know.
No, it is more geared towards the town council. And I think, again, the statement of we're not going to be adding any additional officers. Officers, um, the same with Public Works or any admin staff. If this annexation were to go forward, um, we have done a preliminary cost, it'd be between about fifteen thousand and two. Fifteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars for the town to pursue annexation. That would be from the drafting of the ordinance to the actual referendum itself. Uh, so with that said, Mayor, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I do have Tom Elliott more on as well.
Thank you, Robert. Um, Chief, um. I had a quick question in regards to, you know, sometimes we talk about the benefits of annexation in terms of. How they assist our various departments. Um. Would you like to touch on a couple of those points in terms of how annexation can sometimes benefit the police department, even if it doesn't require additional officers?
Yeah, for us, you know, well, look, we have a small town, and I could be completely honest with you, having any additional locations for them to patrol was. It's a little bit exciting for them, to be honest with you. So that that's a nice thing to add. It's, you know, the. The folks in Shondalock, I think most of us know them already. They attend all our regular town events, so. You know, whether they're annexed in or not, they're really kind of already a part of the community, and our officers uh get an opportunity to know them a little bit better. Um, again, they're so close, the impact is just so minimal. Um, our officers already respond if. Sure, our officers probably respond actually quicker than Orange County does in that location. We clearly have an indicator of that. We. Have an indicator of that actually going on right now as we speak. We've been waiting two and a half hours for a patrol officer to show up at our police department. Um, for a victim that's outside our community. So, you know, I I think that is clearly some of the benefits to them and. And I guess the benefits to us is, you know, just having those locations, uh, being contiguous contiguous to our location. Uh, and having a group of folks that the officers already are pretty familiar with. I think we see uh the ones that come down the third truck every uh Friday night. We we certainly do know them.
Thank you, Chief. Tanya as well, and and Tanya, I appreciate you being on here in terms of um. Your leadership with our Public Works Department. Um, Chief indicated that. That this size uh annexation would not require additional police department, Robert. Our police officers, Robert indicated the same thing with the administration staff. Is that, is that true and valid for um Public Works as well?
Yes, sir. Due to the nature of the fact that this is a gated community, it doesn't. Put any more impacts on us from a public works perspective, other than we'll respond when folks wanna ask about sidewalks. Outside the community very quickly and probably more quickly than they would get from um anywhere else, but that would be outside the community. But we would absolutely not need any more people to maintain this at all.
Thank you. I appreciate um your input as well, so. Um, all right, council. Um, I wanna take this as an opportunity. We've had several public workshops, uh, and informational sessions. Um, in an effort to make sure that we're able to address anyone's concerns, questions. Um, and 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 just, you know, so everybody has the opportunity to learn more about it. Um, we did. We did have public comment earlier. I do see some uh members of the public that have their hand up again. We will circle back to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to comment tonight. Uh, but at this point, I would like to speak directly to council. Um, get input, have the opportunity to answer any questions. Some of you, I know, um. Have been a part of another annexation potentially, but most council members have not, so this is a new process. So this is our opportunity. We're not gonna take any voting action tonight. This is just our opportunity to get information, ask questions, and share our opinions and thoughts and the feedback that we've received from the community. Um, Councilperson David, I'll start with you as you have your hand up first, then we'll move to Councilperson David.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions when it comes to respect of the um. Maintenance of roadways, uh, stormwater systems, lights, et cetera, and Shondalock. Would they accomplish that directly, or would our Public Works group contract that on their behalf? How would how would that function?
They they would, sorry, um, yes, thank you. Um, they would maintain their current relationships if they. If the HOA is not in the position to take care of the responsibilities as agreed within developers' agreement or. Subsequent annex- annexation agreement, then they'd be looking at the same situation we did with Marina Bay. Um, with an MSBU, uh, to make sure that um those homes are being assessed for those improvements. But again, the HOA is gonna be responsible first and foremost to make sure that they're taking care of everything internally. Um, roads, common areas, the gate, uh, stormwater system, so on and so forth. And then if the town needs to jump in, then we'll follow those. Uh, protocols.
What what triggers the the town needing to jump in?
Either through residents complaining, um, and then we do our own assessment. Um, or the system is not working, so you see some flooding. Um, which we had occur in uh Marina Bay. Uh, so that would trigger that. Um, you know, we would. Try to work with the HOA as much as possible, um, but if they have not. Um, put enough money into reserves to cover the cost of, again, resurfacing a road. Um, taking care of their stormwater system, then we would do the MSBU, Municipal Service. Benefit Unit, which is just gonna be assessed to those residents within that certain area. Um, so they, you know, they'll they'll take on the cost of whatever improvements have to be made in order to maintain that. Um, agreement and the uh annexation agreement.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson David.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my only question is um regarding um, you know, being on council and boards and. You had mentioned a year. Is that, Robert, is that a year from annexation, or is it just. Be living in Windermere, and then now they're annexed, and so they've lived there a year. I just wanted to make sure, cuz that was one of the concerns with. One resident I heard from was just them being able to have, you know, having their input, being on the board, not knowing the small town feel and. Coming from the manors, I understand that. So I just um wanted to clarify, is it a year from annexation? That they're allowed to do that, or because they've already lived in Windermere for a. A year, you know, what what does that look like? Thank you.
That's, that's a great question. It would be a year for them to run for an office um in the town of Windermere. But they'd be able to go ahead and start voting for local actions. Um, but again, our next election would be in, what, February, Dorothy, this year, and then. Uh, which would be passed when we would look at annexing them in. So the next time that they would be available to actually vote. Uh, would be March of twenty twenty-four, or actually twenty twenty-five.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. That answered my question. I I just wanted to, you know, to. Assure the residents that it's not an immediate impact if they're, you know, hesitant about this. Thank you.
I certainly, uh, I I long for the opportunity to have additional uh. People run for for elected office in our boards and committees. I think it's a, it's often a positive and and I, you know, we've had several. I think I've, I think I've worked with four or five uh council members from our, you know, what we would consider annexed areas. Um, and, you know, without a doubt, all those individuals has all have always. Uh, acted with the entire town in mind and and been some some really outstanding council people, including two that we have on our current council, so. Uh, Councilperson Stroop. Sorry, Andy, I I'll get right back to you, brother. I knew you were next, but Councilperson Stroop.
Just for clarification, cuz I know Brad said there's some options. At least that's the way I understood it. Um, is Shondalock gonna have a referendum, or is that just something that may or may not happen?
That's mandatory that they, since it is considered an involuntary annexation, meaning that maybe one resident or two or three. Um, would not wanna be annexed in for whatever reason. Um, then you'd look at the fifty-one percent as far as. A referendum, if you get fifty-one percent of the vote, then you're able to annex them in. Um, but I'm looking at the numbers probably over at least eighty percent of the people within Shondalock. Um, would be in favor of annexing into the town of Windermere.
Okay, and will that negate the town having a referendum on it, or is that something optional also?
That's optional. Um, what's required is the vote of the resident electors in the area that you're looking to annex in. Um, the only caution as far as a general election for all the residents. Um, is, again, the educational point. Relative to the positives and negatives of annexing a property, and that's why we held at least two public um. Input uh workshops, not only for the Shondalock uh residents, but also for the town of Windermere. Um, you know, um, the people that are gonna be most impacted, I believe. And this is just my opinion, would be the members that live within Shondalock. Um, so you're only adding about a hundred and seven, hundred and eight um electors.
Okay, and how is that decided? Just say they vote fifty-one percent or greater. How is that decided whether or not it goes to town referendum or not?
That's up to town council, whether or not you wanna do an entire town referendum. Uh, on the subject matter, or just the Shondalock residents on their petition to annex into the town of Windermere.
Okay. So I'm assuming that would be brought up at least some point before it goes to vote.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Robert just said, yeah, it's it's to go to a vote, it would actually come to the town council as an ordinance to set that referendum date. And time, so it would be a public hearing for an ordinance to set that referendum.
Okay, thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Councilperson Stroop. Councilperson Williams.
Ah, good evening, uh, everybody. Um, quick, two quick questions. Ones. Um, if Shondalock's annexed in. Clarification, they could um join boards though, correct? And and um. Not elected positions, but you know, any of the community boards, correct? Or do they have to give a year for that? Okay, so that that we could get them into. Uh, our group that they're they're already a part of, but you know, HPP and some of the other. Great boards that we always need help and volunteers on. Uh, the second. Is there still a section of the roadway? It's the easternmost section. In Shondalock that is covered by the county, that's not covered by the HOA. Because originally, before they gated uh Shondalock, uh. Park Avenue went straight through what's now bushes. Um, and I remember, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, there was a section of the roadway. That's in front of the homes that are not in the HOA, that they had to maintain, or, well, the county maintained. Uh, has that been changed in the HOA covers that now, since they redeveloped on the other side of that street?
Not aware of that, but that would be covered in the developers' agreement to where we would make the residents within Shondalock, because it is a gated community. Responsible for the entire roadway.
Okay.
Um, internal to that development.
Okay, cuz I knew that, you know, once they were gated in, there was. You know, there was a section that that got neglected for a while because it wasn't a part of the HOA. And I thought they'd, that was all resolved and and brought up to par, but I was just looking at making sure that we had all the pieces there. Um, covered. Okay.
Yeah, cuz we're looking at the property praiser, the that roadway connection all the way out to market is HOA.
Okay, on the far eastern side now?
Side, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Um, I know it wasn't for a while because they, all the property on the north side of the street was not developed yet. So I knew it was different. So, okay, that's great to hear. That's all I got.
Thank you, Andy. We certainly uh always appreciate your historical knowledge, my friend.
Sorry.
All right, sounds good. Council, any additional questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Right, see.
I have done.
Go ahead. Okay, all right. I I don't see any additional ones at this juncture. I'll come, I'll circle back with the with council in just one moment. I do wanna. Uh, give the opportunity, uh, Joelle and Ross has had her hand up. I also, uh, Mrs. Groom, I I appreciate that you typed into the uh. Chat box to let us know who you were. Um, it's always helpful on these virtual meetings. We like to know who's here because. Uh, sometimes people like to uh jump on and and uh. And and do inappropriate things on these type of meetings, so we're very cautious and careful, and we appreciate you identifying yourself. Um, Ms. Ross, um, please, if you have public comment, you can make that at this time. If you'll unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Okay, it's, uh, can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Okay, it's actually, I'm gonna, my husband, Tom Ross, is the one that asked us. To ask a question. Our address is one two six zero eight Park Avenue. Uh, within Wind- within Shondalock. I think we were one of the first, the first resident in Shondalock. So we going on thirty-four years here.
We would definitely be interested in your in your questions or comments.
Yeah, okay.
My my first question is, I'm I'm a bit confused about. The geography that was described. Initially, the comment was that there was. Uh, I think it's fifty-five lots or homes. Um, and then later on, there's a one hundred and eight number that comes up. And I don't know how that could be accurate. There's only forty-four lots in Shondalock. Not fifty, and of those forty-four lots, at least three of them. Are homes that occupy two lots, so the numbers don't seem to match up with. What's actually out there on the ground.
No problem, Tom. I'll I'll be able to answer that. Um, I'm sorry if you want to know the question, but. Um, we're looking at fifty-two home sites, and then with resident electors. Um, typically, there's two point two people per single-family home. Um, and I believe Brad stated that there's about a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight resident electors.
But there are not, there are not, there are not fifty-two home sites in Shondalock. That's my point. It's forty-four.
Okay.
I think where they're disconnected is that this is more than just the Shondalock subdivision proper. It's the total Shondalock area, annexation area.
So it's the, it's the non-HOAs that are within.
Correct, correct. That's included in those numbers, yes, ma'am.
That that can be accurate either, I'll think, because there, because there're like eleven or twelve lots that are not a member. Of Shondalock, so that doesn't seem to add up.
Robert, could you show the the revised map that I sent you today? That might help.
I have it up now, but I'm not sure if you can see it.
We can. We see questions, uh, Robert. We don't.
Uh, sorry, I, yeah, I can't pull that, I can't pull that up, but what I can do is go back to the original. Um, and then hopefully that'll answer the question relative to the area. I'm sorry for. Streaming through like this.
Moving now.
So, Tom, if you take a look at this, um, the hash marks that you see here. Those are the properties that were developed prior to the HOA being incorporated or developed. So it includes this entire area and the area that is to the east.
But they're not, but they're not part of the association.
They're not part, they're not part of the association, but they would be part of the annexation.
All right.
And part of the developers' agreement.
My second question has to relate to the commentary about, uh, I think you characterized it as solid waste pickup. Twice a week.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, is it correct to assume that that would include hurricane debris?
Yes, sir. Um, we are very proud, and um, I believe that. Um, I believe FEMA and the, or Department of Emergency Management have really taken a um. Liking to us because of the responses that we do provide during a natural disaster. Um, again, we were one of the first ones to finish up for um Ian and submit for reimbursements. And when you're looking at a more local centralized um response. It's easier than responding for an entire county. So that's why, you know, one of the. Points that I wanted to make was that if you annex into the town of Windermere. You know, you, we're just adding, I think, uh, maybe a half a mile, so it'd be two point seven square miles. Um, and, you know, a hundred and twelve residents. But the response time as far as public safety and for disaster cleanup would not change. Um, you know, everybody in town has my cell phone. Um, same thing with Chief and same thing with, I think, the mayor. Um, so whenever there is some issue. Um, we get text messages or calls, and we're able to respond immediately, and that would not change during an emergency situation.
Are the, uh, in in other locations located within the municipal limits of Windermere. Where there are subdivisions and the like. That have uh roads and sidewalks and stormwater ponds and the like. Uh, are those, all of those other locations, are they imposed? And required to pay for their own uh stormwater ponds and their roadways and their, and their, and their sidewalks?
It depends on which area and. It depends on which area and which agreement or their developers agreement that was entered into, um, previously. So if there's no annexation agreement, the town would defer to whatever the developers agreement would be when developed within Orange County. So there's a, you know, there's different case by case issues with each development that comes through. But any new development that the town either develops or annexes in, um, the town makes sure that they are responsible for, um, what we intend them to be responsible for, which is, again, mostly roads, common areas, stormwater. Now, if the Shondalock development itself is taking care of its own stormwater, then there can be a twenty five percent credit, uh, for the assessment, um, for the stormwater, uh, assessments that are on tax bills. And all we would need is something that certifies that your stormwater system is working as working as it was planned.
What about?
And Tom, and and Tom, I'm sorry, man. I I haven't seen you in a while, man.
What about, what about, what about a credit for roadway maintenance and and sidewalks?
No credit. Um, we haven't given any credits for sidewalks or, um, roadways.
There's no credit, there's no credit for those items because that's not a separate, um, MSTU or or taxing authority that are at Valorem that we.
But that's my point. My point is, is that other residents in Windermere have as a municipal service, roads, sidewalks, and stormwater ponds. If Shondalock comes in, why should Shondalock not be treated with the same obligation being picked up by the town as the town has already paid for other residents? That would seem to violate equal protection of the laws, uh, applicable in, within the confines of, of Windermere.
Yeah, Tom, it it wouldn't be any violation. Again, um, Brad and I have been working together for almost twenty years now. We've done plenty of annexations. Um, each one is a case by case kind of situation. Um, but when you look at the cost benefit analysis relative to the potential of annexing versus not annexing, I believe the benefits outweigh, um, what you're currently spending, which again is, um, if this would not be occurring, you would still be responsible for those roadways as common areas in the stormwater system.
Yeah, we would, but we wouldn't, but we wouldn't have the additional millage rate being paid to the city either. So if we're gonna, we're gonna be paying to the city and also paying for what everybody else's, uh, have their expenses covered by their millage, why shouldn't we receive the same benefits?
And again, it's all based upon what agreements the town comes up with, with, you know, any area that's annexed in or developed. Um, as I.
So there's no reason in the, in the town charter or other, your past history, you've done this before and you're suggesting that you wouldn't do it for Windermere because, question mark?
Are you talking about for Shondalock?
Why, why, why does, why does Shondalock treat, being treated differently than you treat other residents and members of of Windermere?
It's not, Tom. Um, you know.
You won't provide a credit for, for, for roads and sidewalks?
We don't provide a credit for the other areas that, um, were either annexed in underneath the annexation agreement or developers agreement. Um, one example, I think, Woods, not Sunset Bay. Um, but the area that was developed outside of a, outside the HOA, they had to pay through that through an MSBU. So we're not treating any development differently. Um, and as far as the benefits that you would receive outweigh the costs that you would pay because you would get not only twice a week pickups, um, you'd get the emergency response time that would be added. Um, and then Chief, again, was more tailoring this to town council, you know, as opposed to the residents. Um, but all of the, um, medical calls that come out, uh, the Windermere Police Department will respond to that. So if there's a medical call within your development, you know, the response time from the Windermere Police Department is three minutes, and that's for either crime or something that's EMS related.
Are you saying, are you, excuse me, are you saying that, that the town of Windermere Police Department claims it can respond in three minutes to the, to a call in in Shondalock?
Yes, sir. And I can have Chief, uh, attest to that.
Well, uh, I can't, if I, if I take my car to the police department and drive helter skelter as fast as possible from the police department down to Shondalock, uh, there's no possible way I can get there in three minutes. Not a possible way. And you're saying that somehow a police car can do that better?
It can do it better than, uh, Orange County. I can guarantee you that. And I can have Chief, who used to be the Sector Three captain for Orange County. And I understand, Tom, you might not be agreeable to this annexation. I understand that. Uh, but these are good, valid questions that you're asking, um, that some others may have the same types of concerns. So I appreciate it, Tom. And I'll turn it over to Chief that can answer your question relative to response times. And not only that, but, you know, when you look at the amount of attention and detail that you would get for burglary, uh, versus what you would get in Sector Three or whatever sector that we're in right now, uh, it's a lot different. Because, again, Orange County is a bigger area. So with that bigger area, it becomes more crimes, more issues that have occurred within that area. And there's only a certain amount of detectives that can respond to those. Um, so when it comes to minor crimes like, you know, just breaking, entering, grabbing a purse, you know, um, petty theft, it might not get the same attention and detail that you would get with the town of Windermere. And I can turn it over to Chief that can attest to that.
Yeah, and I will, before we, before we turn it over to Chief, I I would say, listen, if you, if you need the police department one time during the life of, of this agreement, the the difference in the cost delta between being in the county and being in the town of Windermere quickly becomes negligible. Um, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll definitely attest to that, uh, the level of service that we're able to provide, whether, whether someone's on vacation and needs their, their house looked at, or whether, um, someone's ill or or elderly, and and our police department checks on those individuals to make sure that they're safe and secure, not only during times of disaster or difficult times, but but consistently. Um, I think that, uh, you know, it's a great cost value proposition, but listen, that's not something that everyone has to agree on. That's why there's the opportunity, uh, for everyone to to vote and to provide their input and thoughts. Chief?
Thanks. I appreciate it. Yeah, our average emergency response time is within the three minute mark. Um, and again, officers, listen, that's an average conglomerate of, uh, the calls, the emergency calls for service. And officers are not sitting in the off, in the office all day long. They they better not be. You know, they're out on patrol, so literally they can be, they can be in the area, they could be next to whatever the call's going. So again, that's an average time. Uh, but even way, are 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 not emergency times, uh, when it's not an emergency and it's a call over with, are are still very quick. They're, they're within several minutes. So, um, the calls are just certainly going to be quick, going to be a much quicker responsive. Um, I have a unique perspective because I retired from the sheriff's office, as many people here know. Uh, I was in charge of Sector Three, which included Shondalock and Pine Hills and all those other areas. So I'm kind of uniquely familiar with the response times that we can offer, and, um, we clearly can offer some really good response times.
Chief, appreciate that. All right. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, uh, from your perspective?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Robert and staff, um, do you need additional direction this evening?
Um, all we would need is consensus to move forward with an ordinance, uh, for the possibility of annexing, uh, Shondalock.
Counsel, is any objections to to that request?
None.
None.
Done here.
Councilperson Stroop.
Yeah, I was just unmuting myself. Uh, would there still, I guess, say, is this an official? Would this still, would this negate Shondalock's vote, which you said is mandatory, and or would this negate going to a referendum for the town?
So. No, it it would still have to go, we would have to draft the ordinance with the referendum language, whether it's just for the residents of Shondalock or, um, the residents of both Shondalock and the town of Windermere.
Okay, thank you. And I have no problem with moving forward.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anything additional, counsel?
Um, just a reminder, uh, for this or for reports or announcements. Um, um, the Saturday Halloween Costume Parade, um, I believe Mr. Mayor, they said you wouldn't be able to be there, so I think they asked me to either co-lead with you if you're there or lead it, but you have to come and find out who I'm gonna be. So, just saying.
I I will be there and I will be happy to co-lead, uh, with yourself.
Awesome.
Any additional council members and staff that would like to join? We look forward to seeing everybody. It's a great event. And, uh, one that, uh, I know the community enjoys a tremendous amount. Any additional, uh, council report outs? I know that Chief will want to thank, uh, everyone, uh, for coming out for the bunk bed build. Um, I'd like to do the same. I I, I cannot say how impressed I am, not only with the entity and the organization of Sleep in Heavenly Peace, but also, uh, the great volunteers that came out and a lot of different and new faces, which is exciting. Um, I think we completed that bunk bed in, uh, building in record time and completed more than our allotment. Uh, but I'll let, uh, Chief give all the details on that. Uh, nothing else from counsel? We will move to staff reports.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we do have our food trucks with, uh, the Halloween theme this, uh, Friday night. Um, but other than that, it's, uh, we're working on the audit right now with, uh, McDermott and Davis. So thank you to Tara and Teresa and the rest of staff on getting, uh, the responses that we need in a quickly, uh, or a quick manner. Um, but other than that, everything is, uh, going pretty good.
Excellent. Uh, Tanya, anything from your end, Public Works?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're just continuing to work with Ross, Dan, and and working through with our, our, um, FEMA reimbursements for Ian.
Great, thank you. Um, Chief, any additional?
Uh, no, sir, just, again, thanks to everybody that came out to help, uh, with the bunk bed build. We certainly appreciate that. And as a, um, without giving too much information, we're, we're just, um, we're excited that the, uh, the individual who actually did, um, get transported, uh, during the five K run, he is out and is doing well. We followed up on that, so I'll make sure I'll be following up with the, with, uh, the resident who assisted with CPR and our officers who actually deployed the AED, which is just another great example of, again, kind of the response time that happens there. But, uh, also being prepared, you know, we have deployed those AEDs unfortunately several times. Uh, and this particular time, there was no question about it, um, that the AED, AED actually deployed. Um, it did indicate that he had no pulse, um, no heart rhythm. And, um, so it's just, uh, kudos to, uh, the individual who was running, who happened to be a doctor, and took care of him, and kudos to our officers who are right there in the same week, where we're, we're grateful, um, that it turned out the way it did.
We'll look forward to, uh, recognizing that individual, um, at one of our future town council meetings, Chief. And, and again, um, the follow up, that that's the kind of follow up that I'm talking about. You know, it's not, it's not hard to find examples of the type of follow up that you get from the town of Windermere that you're just, you know, just size wise and structure wise, the access, um, and the follow up. Uh, and the fact that each and every, you know, I'm sure that a lot of council members, you know, are pingin' chief to find out how that individual is, uh, and has been doing. Um, that's what really makes the difference. And and I don't think you can put a price on it. So, um, Lurk, Lurk Holter, anything?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brad, anything from your end?
I just, real quick, Mayor, just gave you a quick five hundred block update. Um, so they did, in the process, they submitted about ninety five percent of the final engineering plans for the project in the board. We're still waiting on the Septic Permit, um, a maintenance plan for the impervious pavers. And, um, and I would anticipate we should get all that by the end of this week. So just keep you up to date.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the updates. All right. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will adjourn at seven oh three PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.